Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for the City of Utica Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Mrs. Zarumba, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Trenzie.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here, all present. Tonight's a special night here. We're going to be retiring one of our longtime police officers, Officer Randy Plant. I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Kalusny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is always a privilege and an honor to be able to come in front of you and to see not only somebody that I was able to work alongside for many of years, but to see him kind of make it to the end of his career and successfully retire from the Police Department. Officer Randy Plant began his career here at the City of Utica as a dispatcher back in 1999. In 2002, the department saw something in him and decided to sponsor him and send him to the police academy where he was promoted to the position of police officer. Officer Plant has served the department in many different roles. He was a sergeant, he was a firearms instructor, he's been and still is the emergency manager for the city. He's a field training officer, evidence tech, a union steward, and a fire investigator. Officer Plant has received numerous awards and commendations throughout his years, and to be honest, there's probably a lot of incidents that went unmentioned that really he should have been honored for. He really has been a tremendous asset. Like I said, I've had the pleasure to work with Randy my entire career. We have shared some amazing stories and some stories that probably should be shared in council chambers here, but it has been a great experience and somebody that truly I can call a friend. The wealth of knowledge that Randy has on a scene is really unmatched by many people out there. You know, Officer Plant has this uncanny ability that if you're trying to remember a citizen or an incident or something that happened 15, 20 years ago, he will go back in his memory and be able to say, no, that was so-and-so with the blue Chevy and the gray knife, and you know, he just, he really has such a tremendous knowledge of the city and events and people that occur here in the city. Even though Randy is retiring from the Police Department, we're still going to be able to use his services in this public sector. Officer Plant is currently and has been for many years the Assistant Fire Chief for the Utica Fire Department, so we'll still be able to lean on him and use his abilities in the city. One of the longstanding traditions is gifting the officer's service weapon and retirement badge upon retirement. The service weapon is carried every day by the officer and it's ready to be deployed at a moment's notice. The service weapon symbolizes the trust and authority that is entrusted in every police officer, and every day the officer needs to make these split-second decisions that involve life and death. And one of the greatest moments really is in an officer's career is making that to the retirement point. Officers leave their house on a daily basis, saying goodbye to their significant other, saying goodbye to their kids, and not knowing if they're going to make it home. So it's really a special moment in an officer's career. As Officer Randy Plant transitions into retirement, so too will his service weapon. Randy, if you can make your way up to the mayor here, he has another honorary award that's going to be given to you, and then he will present you with your service weapon and your retirement badge.
First, I'd like to say...
[laughter] It's after.
Randy is one of those unique guys who's not afraid to give you his opinion. He always would have a disclaimer, and he would always call, "Boss, boss, I'm going to tell you this, you don't have to do what I'm saying, but you know, it's my obligation to let you know what I think, and I hope I always listen, I hope I always processed what you said, and 99.9% of the time, I went with what you told me because you're a smart guy, you're an awesome police officer, your leadership on the force is going to be so missed. I'm just glad that I had you as I was transitioning into my position as mayor because you made things easy. The advice you gave me, the mentoring you gave me was invaluable, so thank you on a personal level.
Very kind words, thank you.
We did get a proclamation, a special tribute from the State of Michigan in honor of this day for Randy. I'd like to thank Nate Shannon, our state representative, for putting this together, Michael Weber, our state senator. It's also signed by Lieutenant Governor Garland Gill, Kristin, and our Governor Gretchen Whitmer. Randy Plant, Officer of the Utica Police Department, let it be known that it is with deep appreciation for the hard work and civil service that this accomplishment represents that we congratulate Officer Randy Plant of the Utica Police Department upon the occasion of his retirement. We thank him for his career on behalf of the people he has served so well. By dedicating over 24 years to his community, Randy signifies qualities that are very much admired by the people of this state. As an indication of his loyalty and admiration for his community, his service to Utica will continue to be of great value to our state and nation in the years to come. Officer Plant has shown immense guidance and leadership in the Utica Police Department and has been an amazing asset to the force. In 2011, Plant was promoted to Sergeant after working as a dispatcher for two years and a patrol officer for 10 years. Part of his duties include overseeing the road patrol officers. Plant has also served as the Assistant Utica Fire Chief. His work has made Utica a safer place for residents and businesses. Sound judgment, loyalty, and hard work are just some of the qualities that Officer Plant brought to this department, and he takes with him into retirement the gratitude of the people of the community. We are proud to join with his many admirers and friends in saluting his successful career. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to congratulate Randy Plant as he enters retirement. We challenge him to continue his excellent efforts in all aspects of life and wish him health, happiness, and the very best in his retirement.
Very nice. Challenge accepted.
Would you like to say any words before I...
Yeah, I've got a few things I might say, y'all know me. Now, when I was new, and now it's got to be a little bit further out. Thank you all for the recognition. Chief Kalusny, I've had you in my first line here as well, so I really appreciate our relationship over the years. I really enjoyed and valued when we agreed on things, and I really enjoyed and valued the way we disagreed on things because it was for the better, we came away with the right answers, and no harm done, so that's a sign of a true professional, and just continue, I appreciate that. City Council, obviously, city council members appreciate your continued support and your good leadership, very valuable to the city and the employees who work here. I have a special thank you, Mayor Calendrino and Mayor Deion. You both have restored honor, ethics, and integrity to that chair that was lacking for so long. Under your leadership, the city has moved away from a culture of doom and gloom to one of growth, prosperity, and a bright future. Thank you, gentlemen, for being true leaders and bringing out the best in everyone. I look forward to continuing to serve the residents, businesses, and visitors to the City of Utica and other capacities, and look forward to the shining future that is now ahead of us. Thank you all.
It's my honor to send these items with you into retirement, your service weapon and your shield. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
God bless.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
I've lost a little, but I still can't squeeze.
I just keep...
With that, I'm back on duty across the street, so... See you all next year. Thank you.
At this time, we would open up the floor for any public comments for items that are listed on the agenda. Anyone is welcome to speak for three minutes. Again, these are for items listed on the agenda. As we have no comments, we'll keep moving forward. In unfinished business, I think it was last month, we, two months ago, we were requested by a business owner to review our secondhand dealer fees. I believe it was Councilman Deion and Councilman Ryan agreed to do that for us, and they may have a report tonight.
So we sat down and we looked over like some of the dealer fees and various businesses that pay out those fees, the money that comes into the city, as well as paying our costs and how much it's actually truly affecting the businesses. And then as we started breaking everything down, we basically came back to the original consensus that the fees that are currently set up are fair. If you have anything, Councilman Deion.
Well, we had input with the chief, had a meeting with him, it was productive, and turned out that we were informed a little bit further than what we were informed the night of the previous council meeting, and we found ourselves in alignment with the chief's thoughts and his recommendations. So we'd like to, that unfinished business, we don't need to really continue any further with that discussion. We can put it to bed.
No further action required then. Very good. Thank you for doing that work, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consent business. There are four items listed, and they are included in your packet. Unless anyone requests for an item to be pulled out of consent, I would be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzie, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Moving forward, we have no correspondence. Under new business, first item tonight is a request for a donation of a swing or bench for Grant Park, and I believe we have Ms. Linda Zarumba here. If you could step up to the podium.
I'm not a public speaker, but I'll try my best. Linda Zarumba, 11092, Ms. Moore. I'd like to honor my husband and my son by purchasing a swing seat for the Grant Park, and I'd like it placed on the west side of the playground so that...
Bill, can you check her mic? I don't think her mic is on.
It's on now, thanks. So I'd like it placed on the west side of the playground so it faces Hawn.
Okay.
Near the playground than some of the other benches.
Near the playstation?
Yes, yes. And I'd like your approval.
And I take it this is a donation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I will be donating the bench.
We just recently installed two other dedicated swings. Is that the type of thing you're...
Yes, yes, the swing type.
And did you like, did you happen to notice the forged steel plaques that are...
I liked that also.
You liked that as well?
Yes.
Okay. If approved, we'll take a vote here in a second, if approved, we can work with our DPW superintendent and get you a quote for what the costs are.
Okay.
So we don't want to order anything until you know what the cost would be.
Correct.
And we'll work with you on the exact location as well.
Okay. And also, I'm thinking of a tree behind the bench.
Okay.
So, but again, you know, I'd like to check on the costs as well.
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sure you're aware, and I know Councilman Sakura is, some other people may not, but Mrs. Zarumba's husband was a longtime former mayor for time and council member for the city.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Zarumba?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, other than to say that I'd like to help plant that tree.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Absolutely.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. See how easy that was?
It was.
And we thank you for thinking of this, to beautify the park, and I mean, something like that will be there for years and years.
My family enjoys that park so much.
Excellent.
I have three grandchildren there now, so...
Well, that'll be a beautiful thing for them to see, the swing and the plaque and dedication, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda under new business, city rental inspection fees for multifamily properties. I spoke with Mr. Ryan Houlihan a couple weeks ago, along with our building inspector, and he brought some information. I think you want to share it tonight?
Sure.
If you could step up to the podium.
So I believe everybody, you distributed the packet of what I had sent in.
It's in their packets, yeah.
So the mayor was kind enough to meet with myself, and Jerry Hicks was there as well, and we kind of went through, in my opinion, I think there may have been an error back in April when you guys approved a change which increased my costs, as I mentioned in this, about 300%. I included a few different spreadsheets so that we could take a peek through this, and I don't know if everybody, I don't want to bore you by going through it. If everybody has seen it, it makes perfect sense. But what I think happened is the city made a decision to make things blanket where a multifamily per unit would end up being the exact same price as a single-family dwelling would be. I would tell you that based on all the research that we did, checking every other municipality, not every other, but multiple municipalities around Macomb County, I think that this would be an anomaly for how everyone else does it. The stuff I'd like to share with you is, I think the reason for that is there is a big difference in time. We had a pretty lengthy discussion, myself, the mayor, and Jerry, where I could kind of explain to them why I felt this way. In a single family, I'll give an example, I own Riverside Senior Apartments, which you guys were kind enough to sell to me, thank you for that, and hopefully we've got some happy residents over there. To use my property as an example, it's a 54-unit property. For 54 single-family rental inspections, that would be 54 individual communications with homeowners, 54 visits out to individual properties, that would be 54 roof inspections, inspections of basements, inspections of, I mean, there's endless things, basements, driveways, 54 exteriors, you know, it's a significant difference in the amount of time, energy, and I would imagine resources to the city, and I just suspect when you guys approved this, you know, obviously, there's a lot of things that you guys look at. I'm hoping it may have been an error, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. A 300% increase in my world was very significant to the bottom line of a property, and I would suspect most other multifamily folks would probably agree with that, and I do think there's a big difference in single-family versus multifamily. So if you look at the spreadsheets, I did one for single-family homes and one for multifamily. So single-family, and this is just my opinion, I would say Utica's at the top in the highlighted in yellow. Anything representative with a zero just means a neighboring community that has no inspections, no fees whatsoever. Then, as you see down below, to me, the $150 per unit for a single-family, in my opinion, falls pretty much in line. It's not the highest, it's not the lowest, but you're in the realm of comparable for other municipalities. I realize that benchmarking off of neighboring communities isn't the way you guys probably do this, but I think it's at least helpful information to see as a comparison. If you look at multifamily as an example, as I noted, when I had done my last rental inspection, I paid $2,775, which at that time, I'll share with you, was the most I'd ever paid for any rental inspection per unit, and this is, I've been doing this now for somehow 17 years has gone by. So I was surprised by that amount, but I paid it because I had no choice. Now, we went to $8,100 in a matter of about three years, and if you look, that puts you guys at two times the next highest two cities, which was East Point and Mount Clemens, you know, and three to four times some of the other cities. So like I said, all I, you know, would ask is that you take a peek at it, and I proposed what I felt was a, you know, reasonable, if anything, I think it's even a little more than reasonable in the city's direction, and I gave the current breakdown, which came from that, I think it was April 11th, the vote you guys had, and I gave the proposed of what I think would still put you guys at a, you know, a reasonably fair dollar amount. I think the city still is likely covering all of their expenses, and it isn't going to be such a crushing blow to the bottom line of multifamily owners.
So really, what you're proposing is for multifamily dwellings, if I'm reading this right, 150 for the first unit and 75 for a unit after that, right?
That wasn't the way. I proposed it that a single-family was a 150, and multifamily would be 75, and you know, I mean, I'm not overly worried about $75 in this world. If it's easier to do it that way, 75 for the, 150 for the first and 75 each in additional, sure, I would still think that is in the realm of fair.
Okay. Mr. Hicks, is he here? Did you have anything you wanted to add to this? I know we have our building administrator as well, John Droptick.
Yeah, John does all the paperwork and all the figures and so forth. Actually, John, I want to have you speak first.
Okay.
All right, there's some things that we want to bring up.
Can John go to the mic?
Yep. John Droptick, Building Administrator. Building Department's been following the mandate set by City Council back in April at $150 per unit. To change these fees so far after our expiration date, which was June 30th, and we've been doing, I think we have maybe three other outstanding inspections out there, to change this so late in the game would cause a tremendous strain on our resources. We understand that there are concerns with the pricing, and that can be worked on, but he's also had ample opportunity to express his concerns about this. Our original mailing and application process started back in May, I think our initial mailing went out May 11th, so he's had four or five months since the initial resolution by council and four months since the initial landlord notifications were mailed to him. The landlord license for Riverside expired June 30th, so we're already in the middle of September, and a lot's going on since that time. He never approached us, Jerry had to call him to get this process started. In fact, Jerry probably could have issued tickets for all 54 units, and he hasn't, because we wanted to work with everybody as equally and fairly as possible. And they also received two extra years of a free landlord license. Their initial landlord license started in 2019 when he purchased the property, and then expired to 2023 because of COVID and other issues that went on. So that's about all I have to say. Mr. Hicks?
Originally, when I proposed the increases in rental and other various fees for the Building Department, my initial suggestion was to increase by 20%, which would have been $150 for the first unit, and then subsequently it was $60 for each unit after that. It was council's decision and asked, why are we giving somebody who has multiple units a bigger break than the guy that only has maybe four or five rentals? And at that point, I believe it was Councilman O'Donnell who brought it up and said, why don't we go across the board? You guys voted on it, and obviously it passed. So we went $150, and that's where it stood. I do have other landlords in the area that have multiple units and such. I have not heard anything from them, get a little grumbling, but they understand the cost of doing business, so on and so forth. It's council's decision on what you want to do with this. I would ask that if you are going to make a change, I think it's only fair because we're, we do our rentals in odd and even years. Right now, we're in the odd year, all right? We're almost through that, and obviously, a few more months, we'll be into the even year. So I would recommend, if you're going to make any changes, we hold everything true until the next cycle, which means the people that are in the even years would pay the same amount as these folks have paid in the odd years, and then it'd be 2025, where we would make the changes this way. Everybody was treated fairly, and everybody was treated the same.
And those, the even-year inspections start when?
They'll start May next year, right?
May next year?
Yeah.
So by July of next year, we would be through everything, right?
Everything.
The history on this was, and we went over this with Mr. Houlihan when we met a couple weeks ago, the history of this was our Building Department was running in deficit every year, like $17,000, $15,000, and across the board, we looked at all our fees that the Building Department charges, not just landlord inspection fees, but all the permit fees. Jerry did a ton of work, and John did a ton of work of compiling a bunch of different municipalities, similar to what Mr. Houlihan did here for us tonight, and we did our best to try to cover the expenses and get the Building Department where we were now no longer running in deficit. Obviously, we're a government, we're not here to make a profit, but we also don't want our taxpayers to be subsidizing our Building Department activities. So that was the goal, was to get us in line with a break-even point where, you know, the Building Department was able to function and be self-sustaining with the fees that they collect. Since your name was mentioned, Councilman O'Donnell, would you have anything to comment about that?
I think that so, just so folks know what we're looking at, we have our current landlord registration fees, which are $150 flat if you're a single-family home, it's 150 bucks if you have an apartment complex with 54 units, 50-plus units, it's 150 bucks per unit. The idea here is we didn't want to pick winners and losers, and then what we have now is we have these proposed landlord registration fees. Single-family dwellings, a buck fifty, duplex units, 225, multiple units, don't even have to pay the 150 initial fee, those are just $75 per unit. Once again, we're getting back to picking winners and losers for almost no reason. We have these buildings, you're telling me, oh, yeah, each unit, sure, it takes less time to walk from one to the other, but each individual unit has to be inspected, as well as the building as a whole. So to say, oh, you're saving 75 cents on gas because you don't have to go back and forth, there are more failure points in a larger building than there are for a single-family home, for example. So I'm actually not totally unsympathetic to that huge of a jump. I get it, right? That was a lot of money. But, you know, we have to keep operations going, and we have to do it in a way that is fair and equitable to both our residents and to smaller, you know, essentially smaller, you know, duplexes, triplexes, things like that, things that are, you know, keep it fair to them, where we're not giving big breaks to big, you know, apartment complexes simply because, well, that's a lot of money. Well, yeah, lots of things are a lot of money. That's how you have to operate sometimes.
Mr. Mayor, sir, could I add?
Sure.
Quick question for Mr. Hicks, I'm sorry, the building official.
John.
John, how many, how many single-family dwellings can you inspect in a day?
On average, I can probably do, I'll say six, maybe eight, because of the fact, not only do I do rental inspections, but I am the building official and building inspector, and I also do code enforcement.
Sure. Let's just talk about rental inspections for single-family dwellings. How many can you actually perform in one day? Single-family brick, single-family structures?
I would say 60. I would say sixty.
Okay. And how many apartments can you see in the same day, in the same building?
I can probably, it depends on the apartment complex, but I can probably do ten to twelve, maybe fourteen.
Okay, well, that's where the break happens, all right? Now, I understand Mr. O'Donnell's point, a hundred percent, but I understand Mr. Houlihan's point, too. He doesn't, Mr. Hicks isn't driving to fifty-four different locations and making its one set. So, you can spend three or four days there and knock it out, right? So, I think there's a price break there. I don't know that's, is, you know, I'm in alignment with Mr. O'Donnell to some degree, but I think that there's also a way to figure this out that's representative of the work that's performed for the number of units that you have. If it's two units, then that's the easier day. But if you have to be there for four days, the roof is an hour inspection versus twenty-five-minute inspection, whatever the case is. So, I mean, there is some price break there for volume, and I think that's that's merit, and that has merit to it. So, I think that should be taken into account.
I think a few things, when it comes to, I've been on hundreds of inspections. So, Mr. O'Donnell, I don't know how many rental inspections you've been on, but I've been on hundreds of them, and there is a significant, significant difference in time, energy, resources, scheduling. This isn't about saving seventy-five cents on gas, it's not what this is about. What this is about, to me, is these inspections, back to the discussion they were having about, I don't want the city, I've, I own a piece of property in a city that I care about. I want the city to to be successful. But I also don't think it's my job, as a multifamily owner, to subsidize other potential losses within a Building Department. If I, when we looked at the fees, when I met with the mayor, there was pages and pages, I've got it here in my folder somewhere, and they spent a lot of time, I suspect, that meeting, and when you guys all met, was far more about changes to the building, you guys were undercharging for building inspections, no question. We talked about that. And I think you resolved a lot of that with the changes that were made. I think this was an, oh, by the way, we're not picking winners and losers, and I get, I've never sat in your chair, I understand that you guys have a different, you know, responsibility than I have in the private sector versus public, but it shouldn't be our job to subsidize it. It isn't a profit center, just like the mayor said, and it is not, there's a reason, when you look at this spreadsheet, you know, I think other cities are able to do it, and I would like to think Utica's better than a lot of these cities on this, I'm not just saying that. I think that if they're able to do it for these fees, I would suspect you guys should be able to do it. There's a reason not one other city, not one. It's not, it'd be different if you guys were like, well, Mount Clemens does it. No, they don't. Not one other city charges the same for single-family as multifamily. That's not just a happenstance, that's because they are vastly, vastly different inspections that take a vast, and I understand Jerry's, you know, if he's got to go see six, eight houses all over in a a single-family inspection, I would tell you, an average, and this might be a good question for Jerry to answer, a average single-family inspection, I would say, takes forty-five minutes to an hour. An average unit inspection, and you're correct, there's a building still that you have to walk around that takes a little bit of time, but an average unit inspection is probably five to ten minutes. That's a huge difference in time and energy and resources, and I just think that, I don't think this is a miss, this is a miss. You guys made a mistake, this is just my opinion, I'm entitled to that, and all I'm saying is, I don't think it's an accident that every other city does it differently. I just think this was something you guys said, ah, we aren't picking winners and losers, this isn't about winners or losers, I don't want favoritism, I want fairness.
If that's the case, I am more than willing, so this schedule that you proposed, I think, is relatively fine. I don't know about the seventy-five dollars per unit, I don't know if we'd end up losing money on that, as long as we tap on the one-hundred-and-fifty for the single, yeah, I mean, we just make the first, you know, your first unit is one-fifty, and everyone after that is seventy-five, or whatever that dollar amount should be, fine, then at least then we're still not picking winners and losers.
And that is how it was prior to the change, I believe.
Correct.
No, I think we had a tiered system, where the more units you had, you actually got bigger discounts.
Yeah.
I don't think so, I think it was.
Question. Where does the time get accounted for, for you inspecting the parking lot, the fire retention retardant that's on the thing, the elevators, all of that? That is something that seems to be missed of, and I know you don't spend five minutes on an inspection in a house, okay? No offense, that's ludicrous, it's not five minutes, that's actually.
No, no, I said per unit.
Per unit, nobody spends five minutes per unit, that's actually insulting, okay? From my opinion to you, I can't walk in the door and go turn on a faucet and be done, three faucets or a tub and that in five minutes. That is out and out insulting.
Well, Mr. Sikora, I'll be honest with you, I'm not, my intent's not to insult anybody.
I understand, but you did.
But have you, how many, how many rental inspections have you personally been on?
I haven't, but I own a home.
I've been on hundreds.
I own two commercial buildings, I have Clinton Township coming in to do their inspections, nothing takes five minutes, okay? So, if that's.
I said five to ten, but I.
It's still an insult at ten minutes, okay?
Okay.
So, I understand your plight of the money, I want to be fair also. I don't think it's fair to start off at seventy-five dollars and keep on going seventy-five dollars. The amount of paperwork and everything you file, between the inspection time, filing it, keeping a license, now, this license is every year or every two years?
We do every two.
Every two years, okay?
I'd like to add, I got to take in consideration my assistant's time, the paperwork.
All, I'm acknowledging all of that, it's not just time on the job. Then you file your reports, you publish the reports, everything has to be there, so there can be some movement, but I don't think seventy-five dollars covers an inspection. The ten minutes you say it takes by the time they drive there, and yes, they line some up, but then coming back and doing everything else that's necessary to do that and file it and make it valid, so when it comes down, if somebody challenges, hey, look, why, why did you let this go where you didn't go? It's documented, it's proved, so.
What does the city pay for the inspection, like, your cost, or whoever's performing the inspection?
When we did the fees and all, you guys brought me up to sixty dollars.
So, if we went to seventy-five per unit, the city would, for admin, for the building, for all the other costs, we would only, the city would only be getting fifteen dollars?
Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Sure.
What if you had a minimum fee per standard unit, like a single-family residential? Then after that, you have a scale based upon square footage of the building. So, up to twenty-five-hundred square feet is this. Everything after twenty-five-hundred square feet and beyond is a graduated scale, depending on square footage overall that needs to be inspected, is that fair?
Graduating, graduating scale in what sense?
Based upon square footage.
Graduated in what direction, I mean?
Well, if you had five thousand square feet, you'd be X amount of dollars, and fifteen thousand square feet, you'd be X amount of dollars plus, and you'd continue, the rate continued to increase as square footage increased.
I don't think any city's doing that either, though.
No, they're not.
But it seems fair.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I also don't want to make you guys have, I don't want to propose an algorithm to make things overly complicated. The thing I would like to say is, to me, Jerry, who I think in this room probably has the most experience in rental inspections, proposed a twenty percent increase. That was his proposal. To me, that is, you have to value the guy, and I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, Jerry, the guy in here that has the most knowledge and is saying, hey, we should raise it twenty percent. To have a three-hundred percent increase in anything in this, this isn't about me complaining about dollars, this is, when I saw this, I was like, this has to be a mistake. So, I think you had a guy saying, let's raise it twenty percent. I'm saying, let's raise it, whatever that is, it's, go from, you know, sixty to seventy-five. I just, the only thing I can use as a case is my property that I have with you guys on fifty-four units, obviously, you know, John or somebody's got to send out a letter, we have to call, we have to schedule it, then everything from there forward, I suspect, is Jerry on site, and then when he comes back, Jerry takes all his notes, he, maybe he does it, or he hands it to somebody else. As an example, if we did it the way I proposed it, the city'd end up making about nine hundred dollars, the city's way, after paying Jerry, and by making, I mean, nine hundred goes to the city, and the balance would go to Jerry. To me, that seems pretty reasonable for what I just described, when the balance of the stuff is happening on site. And once again, the five to ten minutes, I want to clarify that, and I appreciate your passion, Mr. Sikora, I like that, but I would also tell you that I'm talking about, from the moment I put a key in a door, the door opens, and Jerry and I walk through that particular unit of six hundred, seven hundred square feet, we're, we're out of there within ten minutes.
One of the biggest resource killers for us is, we set up, Jerry and John set up inspections, you know, person's not there, they have to go back.
Totally agree.
How does it, when you go to a property like Mr. Houlihan's, are you having to make repeat visits, or is it lined up where you're knocking out all fifty-four?
If somebody is there, if I go to an apartment complex, whether it's Houlihan's or anybody else in the city, usually, I like to have either the head maintenance or somebody there to walk me, walk with me, all right? I don't go into a unit, if it's vacant, I'll go into it. If it's an occupied unit and the owner is not there, I won't go into it, someone's got to be with me, all right?
So, how does that work in the real world, though?
Well.
You said you can do ten a day, if you go to Mr. Houlihan's property tomorrow.
If there, if there's somebody there, someone's walking with me, which usually there is, yeah, I can get in and out, but, you know, I mean, I check, I look under the faucets, or I look under the sinks, I check the faucets, I check windows, I check GFI inspectors. So, to say ten minutes, no, you know, fifteen to twenty minutes on his units, they're small, they're older folks, ninety percent of those units are well-kept, you know, I mean, you got a cement ceiling and a cement floor. So, I can get in and out of there in twenty, twenty-five minutes, okay? But as far as repeat, if if somebody's not there, and I don't have somebody like Houlihan walking with me, then, yeah, I have to go back, okay? I get in all the units, I do all, how many did you say you had over there?
Fifty-four.
So, I get in all fifty-four units, okay? I don't skip them, if they're not there, then I have to go back.
But does that change the city's price, or is their price flat until you complete them all?
Well, I get paid every time I go out there, okay? If I go out there and no one's home, I, they get, they get charged a re-inspection fee, and then I go back out there and I do the fee, or the inspection.
Which that, to me, absolutely, as a, I've had this when I used to have lots of single families and lots of other municipalities, it was not out of the ordinary, where I call, we schedule it, we call the day before, yeah, I'm going to be there, and then the inspector shows up, and they're not there. I fully expect, if that happens, I should be billed an additional fee, I wasted somebody's time, and I would bill that, sometimes we'd pass it along to the resident, sometimes we would not, depending on the circumstance. To me, this would be no different. If the landlord, I know Jerry, Jerry's great, Jerry and I have a good rapport, I keep my stuff really tight, I would say it's as tight as any landlord does theirs, to where I'm organized, there's letters that go out, people know, so mine goes quicker than normal. But, yeah, if you've got people that you're having to go back out, I understand that that's a fee that that person should be charged, meaning that person being me. If I'm not, didn't get my stuff together, that's on me.
Before we change this, our old fee was one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the first unit and fifty dollars for each additional. I had proposed one hundred and fifty dollars for the first unit and sixty dollars for each additional unit. And then, like I said, you guys decided, you know, let's make it all one flat fee.
So, if you're getting sixty dollars per inspection, then the city is getting zero on those multi-units then?
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, at the time, I was doing, I don't have my fee here.
It was fifty at that time, Jerry.
Was it fifty?
Okay.
So, the city was getting ten dollars per, on the multi-units.
Yeah, okay.
The last thing I'd like, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Sikora.
Just a question, so, the sixty dollars is your fee, you get that in your paycheck, call it, okay?
Yes.
So, the difference of fifteen dollars if it stayed at seventy-five dollars, that's not including all the paperwork being filed and all of that, your inspection fee?
Right.
So, if, as much time, if not more, is going to be spent on the paperwork once it gets back?
And that, right, and and there's also the fact that, okay, we send out our notices March 1, okay? They're supposed to have all their paperwork in, done by Jan, or by July 1, okay, is when the the rental starts, okay, the new period starts. There's a lot of times that we have to send first notice, second notice, then sometimes we don't get responses to that, I have to make phone calls, so there's a lot into it. I would make this recommendation at this point in time, if you want to do something and change this, I would say, let's table this and look into it deeper and and talk more about it. Again, like I said earlier, I would, because the odd, the odd year is almost over with, if we change something right now, then the even year, they get away with murder, okay? They don't get stuck like these guys are getting stuck supposedly, maybe it's a bad choice of words, but if we go, we table this for now, we keep everything the same until the, to, what'd you say, twenty-five? All right? At that point in time, with discussion, we can decide how we want to handle this, where we want to go with this. This way, all the landlords, even and odd, for this year and next year, are all at the same pace. And then in 2025, everybody starts new. That's my suggestion.
Just as a question, you're doing the paperwork filing, once it comes back. What would you say your average is, a half an hour, fifteen minutes, now, what does it take you to take Jerry's information?
Some are easy, some have a lot of your list of violations.
I'm going to say even just, again, for, let's say.
Time wise, what would you say?
An apartment.
Well, looking at the, this is their 2019 inspections and the list of violations from 2019, that would probably take me forty-five minutes.
It's one, single page, correct?
Yeah.
So, it's one, one page.
That was for fifty-four units?
Yeah.
Yep.
I would like to add, changing this, this, right now, this year, affecting multifamily units would, again, put a tremendous strain on not just the Building Department, but on the City Clerk and the Treasurer's Office. Going back and finding these multi-units, processing, potentially processing refunds and making things correct, go to Mr. Houlihan's suggestion, would just be a nightmare. I would also like to reiterate that these rental notices went out in May, May 11th, 2023. Mr. Houlihan was sent a second notice July 13th, he ignored both of them.
That's not.
He could, he, let me finish.
Okay.
I, I'll let you finish. Mr. Houlihan didn't respond to either of those messages. It took Jerry reaching out to him on July 26 before anything happened. Had he made his, you know, when that initial notice went out in May, we might have been able to nip this in the bud and stop, you know, make corrections before they went too far and caused so many people to have already paid into this.
John, I appreciate your information, but that's inaccurate. On June 12th, I spoke with Jerry, I explained to him, so I had had that notice, I don't open the, you know, my girls open the mail in the office, so I believe you said it went out, what was the date it went out?
First notice went out May 11th, and a second notice was mailed out June 13, July, July 13th.
So, I remember, I.
Notice, but when did, when did we send out our initial notices?
May 11th?
Yeah, mail out.
So, then I sent him a second final notice on July 13th, and then you called him on the 26th.
I thought we sent them out in March?
No.
No. So, for me, I'm going to call a spade a spade. If I screw up, I'm going to be the one to say I made a mistake. I've received this sometime in May, I don't know when it came, let's say I got it by May 15th. The first step I got it, I thought, how is this even, is this even legal, was my first question? Is this possible? Because a city's job, or the way I understood it, was, is this, you're supposed to charge what your expenses are. When I see something's a three-hundred percent increase, back to the picking winners and losers example, every other, single-family dwelling had a twenty percent increase, one-twenty-five to one-fifty, I went from twenty-seven, seventy-five to eighty-one-hundred. I took that, I contacted my attorney and said, can they do this? I don't understand this. I have the note back from him on June 12th, in which I called Jerry that day, and said, Jerry, I don't understand this, is a, how, is this a mistake? I think you guys made an error, which I really still believe you did. That was my first reach out. So, to say I ignored it is just simply inaccurate. So, I, I didn't, wasn't communicating with you.
I'm not privy to every conversation Jerry has.
I understand that, but then I want to make sure we're talking facts here, I spoke with Jerry on the 12th, and then from there, we had several subsequent conversations, trying to get on a calendar, a time that would work for the three of us. So, it's not like I ignored this, and this isn't even about me, guys, if I get stuck with this eight thousand dollars, I get stuck with the eight grand. This is about, this is a huge, huge burden to the bottom line of every single, every multifamily owner in your community. This helps me, those additional funds are things I can put back in. I don't know if you guys have seen Riverside, I've put hundreds of thousands of dollars into that place and done everything that needed to be done, I want to continue to do that. But to say a three-hundred percent increase, two-hundred-and-ninety-two percent, is reasonable and fair, is just not, it's not even in the realm of reality.
And in good faith, I believe you paid a portion that we all agreed upon until we could figure this out, is that not?
Correct, I came in, I paid.
Did you pay, I think, four thousand of arrears, right?
Yeah, I paid what I had proposed here, which we had kind of agreed on that, so I, my goal here is to be, you know, as fair and reasonable and be a good steward of the community, that's why I paid that, and I told you, I'd escrow the balance, and I, you know, at this point, if I'm going to get stuck paying it, I'm going to get stuck paying it. The only thing I would say, that, John, you made a point about the burden on the city, how many, can I ask how many multifamily properties there are in the city?
Did you get that count?
No, I don't have that.
I think we have about two hundred, well, I don't know how much of that two hundred is multifamily.
I, I thought it was somewhere around forty was multifamily, I thought.
I believe it's more than that.
Okay, 'cause the only thing I would say is, these, this change happened June thirtieth, so you're talking July, August, and half of, so we're two and a half months in. To say that I'm gonna have to eat this this year, and everybody next year's gonna have to eat this, I think that's an unreasonable proposal. I think we're, we're two and a half months into a change of a three-hundred percent increase. If everybody here feels a three-hundred percent increase is fair, then I'll walk out of here and say, alright, I gotta, I gotta take my lumps and deal with it. If we don't think this is fair, to say it's gonna be an endless amount of time, energy, I would be willing personally to contribute a portion of that resources out of my pocket to give a chance to get refunds back to these people that are getting overcharged like myself. I would, but to say we're gonna get stuck this year and stuck next year, all, everybody, it's just that, that's a, you're making up for your losses on your building inspections on multifamily owners.
No, I think that, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, I, I think that we, I think your proposal of tabling and doing more research is totally valid because we don't know the story. The story we're hearing is, this is a three-hundred, four-hundred, whatever percent increase. There could be the alternate story of, for years, multifamily, uh, units have been underpaying to the detriment, to, where single-family homes and taxpayers have to make up for it. And now, yeah, does it hurt when we have to catch you back up to actually getting you to the cost of what it costs us? Yeah, it might be, but I don't know. I don't know if that's the story, right? I don't know if that's-
And I'm not saying you have to make a decision.
I think more information is needed. I think more research is justified. And I actually am very, uh, you know, the idea of sort of yanking the rug out from under, uh, current people by changing the rules now, I am pretty, I mean, that makes sense.
Just, I mean, you keep saying, we're trying to do this to take care of all the building. That's not true. I came before this council with, and the mayor and I sat down in black and white, and I showed the mayor, and he was, it was even astonishing at what we were charging for permit fees and everything, as opposed to the other cities. So as far as the building department goes, my fees that you guys agreed on, well, that's taking care of the building department. This, we're only talking about rentals here, and we're not talking about single-family. We're only looking at the, uh-
Multi-unit.
Multi-unit stuff, okay?
Can I, can I just clarify one thing? What I meant by that, Jerry, was, I agree when you guys brought this as kind of a overall, let's look at our building department fees. I agreed with you, and I told you guys that day, your building, your fees for your inspections were low, were low. You looked at them, you guys did a good job with the spreadsheet, very similar to this. And what I suspect you guys did is you said, look at, let's look at every other city, and man, we're low here, let's increase that. We're low here, let's increase that. I would suspect that's what happened. What I'm saying is, to Mr. O'Donnell's point, my three-hundred percent increase isn't like my opinion, that's just math. It's two-hundred-and-ninety-two percent. I went from twenty-seven seventy-five to eighty-one hundred. And I'm saying this spreadsheet is the exact same data you guys did when you adjusted and you said, hey, we're too low here, let's increase this. I'm saying if you look at this, you are double, you, you know, to give you an example, Utica, eighty-one hundred. If I was in Centerline, it'd be twenty-four-ten. Clinton Township, twenty-eight-ten. East Point, four-thousand-fifty. Mount Clemens, four-thousand-fifty. New Baltimore, four-thirty-two-fifty. If I was in Warren, I'd be twelve-hundred-and-fifty. If I was in St. Clair Shores, I'd be twenty-eight-hundred. What I'm saying, and you're welcome to fact-check all this, this is all, I have each of the supporting that I'd be happy to email you, the PDFs from the city websites that show all this information. What I'm saying is, all I'm asking you to do is do the same exercise you did with the building permits, where you ticked things up because you were too low. If you ticked things up here and you look and you're two-hundred percent, the next closest city, to me, that is a mistake.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion, sir?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we postpone this portion of the agenda until either the next council meeting or the one thereafter, and that, uh, if we, doing so, if Mr. Houlihan could place those funds into escrow, as he stated, he may do that, and we could then have the city maybe take another look at this until a future day. I feel like we will not, uh, resolve this matter this evening, and the, and the efforts of brevity, maybe we can go ahead and move to postpone this.
I support that.
Motion by Deion, support by Torenzi. Any other discussion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, um, I'm in favor of what Councilman Deion said. However, I don't think we should shirk this too long, because if we did make a mistake, there's really, I, I don't think we should wait till twenty-twenty-five, because a mistake is a mistake, regardless of what it puts us behind the eight ball. I don't want, I understand everybody's point of view, but to me, that much of an increase, you can't tell me it takes the amount, same amount of time to, to look at an apartment as it does, uh, eighteen, two-thousand-square-foot home. I just, not mine. So I think we need to do this quickly. I don't think we need to shirk this till twenty-twenty-five.
To play devil's advocate, we had that exact discussion when this first came up, and it was kinda decided that there wasn't as much savings as we thought. And that's why, based on, uh, Councilman O'Donnell's motion, that's why we took away the discount for multi-units, is we had a pretty lengthy discussion, and we came to a conclusion that there wasn't a huge time savings, that there was still the scheduling, there was still, you know, it was comparable what amount of time he was spending and John is spending on the admin side of things, that it was very similar. I mean, that's, I think, why we all, if I'm not mistaken, I think we voted unanimously to approve what Councilman O'Donnell did.
We, we were having a hard time coming up with a point of view on it that didn't essentially wash out the cost, right? To make negligible, really, the difference, right?
Right, right. That being said, I agree with the approach that we are, we're talking about here, the motion on the table to postpone this at least until next month. I think what we need to do is come up with, uh, look at Mr. Houlihan's recommendation and run a model and see how that, those numbers work out. The portion that I don't see here is, you know, we, we need to figure out, what will the inspector fee be? What will the city's portion be? You know, to handle all the admin side, the building costs, all that other stuff. We need to make sure that, you know, everything's being accounted for, uh, and not just make a rash decision, so.
I would also like to, and I apologize, Jerry and John, I do, but if it is possible, you keep saying that we're at the end of the year. We are only two months into this, you know, and if, and if we have to make wrongs right, do we wanna wait until two thousand twenty-five to do that? Because we did this, at that point, it will be two years ago. You know, so if we can, in fact, make it right, that's something that I think that we need to discuss between-
In all honesty, I, in my mind, I forget, our fiscal year is July. I'm thinking end of the year, this is September. I'm looking at, December is end of the year, so I apologize.
Well, the other issue is, we've already paid the inspector fees, too, and I'm sure they're not, he's not gonna give the city a refund either.
But it's something that we can look at when we're re-looking at this. So I, I think that, I don't think that it's right to wait until two-hundred, twenty-twenty-five, I'm sorry. And, you know, did we make a mistake? Hmm, maybe a little.
But I think we need to look at the data a little bit harder, a little bit more critically, see where everything lays out, run some models, uh, and we don't wanna jump in and make a rash decision like perhaps we did previously.
I agree.
Just going by Mr. Houlihan's data here, Centerline charges twenty dollars per unit for every other unit. What are they paying their inspectors? Twelve dollars, okay? I'm just looking at some numbers that, have they not looked at what they're charging? Okay? What does it mean, clarification for Warren, it says, only twenty percent of unit to be inspected and paid for. What does that mean?
That's not uncommon in, in a lot of cities that I've dealt with as you go further north.
What does it mean? Warren's not further north, it's south, okay? What does it mean?
My point was, that may not be the norm in Macomb County, but in other counties, what they will do is they will take a snippet, and as a building inspector, I think if you ask Jerry, if he walks into five units of fifty-four, he's probably gonna have a pretty good indication what type of landlord you're dealing with. Did they do, are they taking care of it? Are they having good smoke detectors? Are they changing their furnace filters? Are they doing things right? That's really what this is about. So what a lot of cities have done is they will adopt a percentage. This is very similar to how insurance inspections go. When I have my annual insurance inspection by my insurance company, it's very similar. They say, give me a list of all your units, we're gonna pick at random ten percent of your units, we're gonna visit ten percent, and they feel that's a good indicator of what the balance of your units are going to go. And in my experience, as I see them as a purchaser, that's usually proves true, that they, you know, there could be an outlier, but for the most part, you're gonna see a good snippet. That's what that means.
But as Mr. Hicks said, that's not his policy, right? You inspect every unit.
No, I've never done that. I go to all the units, I mean, you know.
So that one, I think, gets thrown out, 'cause that's a whole different process.
New Baltimore gets thrown out.
The lesser ones-
New Baltimore goes every unit, too.
Okay, for four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Well, in, in all honesty, New Baltimore is in the process of changing this.
Yeah, how could New Baltimore?
Do fifty-four units.
Do fifty-four units for four-hundred-and-thirty bucks?
It's, I would tell you, that is probably an onsite inspector, or a on-staff inspector, and they're charging, you know, whatever their nominal amount is. The, one last thing I'd like to say when you guys do look at this, and I appreciate that, I don't want, I'm not trying to make you make another rash decision, but I'm also, just as Mr. Secora is, I'm gonna be passionate when I see something wrong. I think there's an error here. I'd love for you to look, John brought up, he had my one-pager for fifty-four units for twenty-nineteen. What I think would be helpful for you guys is if you looked at a rental cert and said, alright, we've got Riverside here from twenty-nineteen, here's a one-pager for that. Let's look at what a multi, or a single family for one unit, I would suspect most of them are about the same. Maybe they've got a couple less items, but it's not that uncommon to have a single page for fifty-four units. It's not like I'm getting fifty-four pages for one, I bet you for a single-family dwelling, they're getting a one-pager that may not be quite as long as mine, but both things fit on one page. To me, that's a huge difference in time.
Alright, we did have a motion and support. Was there any other discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. And thank you again, Mr. Houlihan, for coming in, and, uh, we obviously wanna do the right thing, uh, but we also have a city to take care of, and we can't put unnecessary burden on our taxpayers, and, you know, that's, that's that balancing act we're trying to achieve, and, and we're gonna look at things closer and come up with a solution, okay?
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, in closed session, we discussed the tentative agreement with our police command, uh, group. At this point, uh, I would be looking for a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the city of Utica and the Police Officers Labor Council on behalf of the Command Officers Association, and to authorize drafting and execution of contract.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Secora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Torenzi?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Onto department reports, I'll kick things off. First thing I'd like to remind everyone that the Utica Homecoming Parade is this Friday, September fifteenth, starts at, I believe, four-fifteen at Jimmy John's. Auburn Road and Cass will be shut down for a small amount of time as the parade makes its way to Utica High School. It's always a great time, a lot of fun. I know our city clerk has a young football player that will be a part of the festivities that night, and I'm sure she'll be out there whooping it up. So, yeah, if anybody has some time on Friday around four PM, definitely recommend checking out the Homecoming Parade. We're also working hard on the Nightmare on Auburn Road. I know our Parks and Rec, uh, chair is probably gonna talk about that a little bit. That event is on Saturday, October seventh, from noon till eight PM. Also, parts of Auburn will be closed that day, uh, the whole day, from noon till eight. So if you own a business, or if you need to do some commuting through Utica, be aware that on October seventh, from noon till eight, Auburn Road will be shut down. Right. Okay, maybe an hour before or something, right? Why don't you address it when you get to Parks and-
Tom's gonna talk to the chief to find out the time.
Yeah, let's address it during Parks and Rec, okay? Also, we, this was a sad month this month. We did lose a couple members of the Utica family. Longtime city clerk, she was the clerk for twenty-nine years, started, I was shocked to see the number, nineteen-eighty-four. I was in my senior year in high school, and I feel like a pretty old man. But that's Kathy McGrell. The McGrell family, as you know, uh, is just part of the Utica fabric. One of them's sitting right next to me at the moment. So our sympathies to the McGrell family, for sure, Kathy will be missed. Our director, library director also, Katie Francis, also lost her father recently, Mr. Hubert Gross. So, um, I would ask if we have just a moment of silence for both of the Utica families. Thank you, everybody. And that's all I have for my reports tonight. Does anybody else from council have anything to report tonight?
I do. I just wanted to publicly thank the Fire and Police Police for helping at Apple Fest this past weekend. It's always a joy to have them there because it just kinda gives everybody an awareness, and it's a comfortable feeling to have, you know, the Utica Fire and Police at the Apple Fest. So thank you so much for your dedication. I know you guys have been there every single year, and I'm Chief Luzon, I'm sorry I went on Friday and I didn't get to see you on Saturday, but it's always a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torenzi. Anyone else from council have anything to report? Alright, we have nothing from Planning Commission tonight, nothing from Assessing. Mr. Hicks, anything else to report from building tonight? At what time would?
Maybe next council meeting.
Very good. No report from Library. Chief Wilsack, report from Fire, please.
Yeah, let's be extensive here. The mayor and council, before you, I have a AFG grant acceptance, EMU twenty-twenty-two fire grant, oh-eight-one-six-three, that I would like to have a motion to accept the grant in the amount of seven-hundred-eighty-five-thousand dollars and sev- seventy, seven thou- yeah, here, seven- Seven-hundred-eighty-five-seven-one-four-point-two-eight dollars in federal funding with our match of thirty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents for a total of eight-hundred-twenty-five-thousand dollars, which is in this year's budget. I would, uh, like to have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Motion by Secora, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council?
We're happy that it finally came through.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, with that motion, I need a budget amendment for the purchase of a Spencer fire truck. Our grant has a performance deadline of like, like, just approximately two years. And so we kind of had to go out and buy or see what was available because a lot of the manufacturers have a three to five-year build on fire trucks right now. So we happened to fall into a deal with Spencer. They backed out of a pumper, another company was, or another city was going to buy this pumper. They had the stock unit coming down the line and we went for a meeting and it fits our needs. Well, you know, take its weight into the future for the fire department. And, but I need a budget amendment on it because it came in over what we were granted and it's just ridiculous out there, the way prices on these trucks have gone. St. Clair Shore's bought the same jack truck, but their chassis was $40,000 less than ours in a year. So that's how bad things are out there right now. And I had three bids. The Spencer truck came in $848,835. I had a bid from HME with a comparable truck, $864,000, and I subbed in for $861. And the truck that we did purchase, we got to catch it before it was coming down the line so we could make our, our adjustments to what we could do with it. And we've got a lot more stuff included in this price that's cheaper than the two other ones that it's really a workhorse for our department. So it's a unique truck, I included a picture of it. They're very similar to that, but there's another compartment in front of it, so it's a longer truck, so we got that much more power as opposed to the other trucks that were just regular fire trucks. And it's going to really fit our needs, it's got a poly body, so it'll never rust. And I was a little hesitant on that, but I called Meskeeg and they rolled one over in the ditch and all the doors still opened and everything when they operated it, so it's a very solid truck and they've built them for over 20 years. We do have a Spencer, I'm in our fleet right now. It's a 2000, we've never had any problems with it. They're a local Michigan company. So with that, I need a additional funds request to purchase the Spencer pumper, stock number 1636, in the amount of $24,000. And I need a motion to transfer, to approve the funds, and a motion to approve the purchase of the truck. So moved.
Support.
Any discussion from council?
No, I spoke to.
My one question, chief, and obviously we got to do this. I mean, you know, we're getting a new vehicle for a very good price, but what hidden costs are there that we probably are not seeing here? I don't see the outfit, is there outfitting? Obviously, the branding, you know, the...
This is coming letter and everything, so.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, we worked a deal with them. I even got you, we have an EMS cabinet in our, inside the cab, we took two seats up. We really did a lot of nagging. We got some pull-off boards included in this and we got a booster line coming off the back. We eliminated, we had a couple wishlist items and the, were included, we got them included. We got a booster line coming off of it, they've eliminated booster lines on trucks and we're going back to it just for the convenience of them. But other than that, there shouldn't be any, well, we had a couple budget items that we got Xed on this that we wanted to get, but there was a light tower and a deck gun, but...
Just to keep it at the dollar amount?
Yeah, so we were below, so.
So you don't anticipate coming back to us when this truck's here and say, oh, I need $25,000 for this or that?
We shouldn't have to because we have, just the deck gun.
The deck gun and the light towers?
Yeah.
How much were they?
Light tower is like 20...
19,640.
1,900?
No, sorry, 19,640 for the light tower and then 10,450 for the deck gun.
Wow.
So the, but then as far as I remember, the specs, everything would be prepped for those.
Yeah, I had a prep for both, so while they were doing it.
I'm sorry, what was the second item?
A deck gun.
Extended gun, it's the Master Stream that comes right off the truck.
And how much was that?
10,450.
So really, we're talking about another...
26.
29.
Another, 29,000.
So another 30,000.
Another 30,000. Do you feel that you need it, chief? Those items? Do you feel like you're doing, are you saving money to, to make it fit a, an area for budget?
I was going, yeah, we were going over the budget, but yeah, the light tower is a good safety factor for everybody on the scene. It lights up the whole area.
Do you have money in your equipment budget for it?
No.
No, that's why he's asking for a budget.
That could be a budgeted item down, like next year and that too. This truck's supposed to be delivered sometime June, I believe.
And correct me if I'm wrong, chief, eventually when this is planning to become our new frontline?
That'll be our new frontline truck, yep.
It delivers in June of 2024 if approved?
That's the projected.
So, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the deck gun is to be able to fight fire from a distance, basically, and send heavy duty, lots of water, high velocity, and especially when we have large buildings like our big box stores. I would feel that that's, I mean, I don't know if chief really wants it or he's just, you know, saying, hey, listen, I could do without it, but I think that the department...
It's a very useful item.
I think the department could benefit from it. I don't want to spend any more money than what's necessary, but given the structures that we have, if there's a fire at the back of, midway through the middle of Best Buy or a building like that, this deck gun's going to be 100 feet off the curb and send water all the way to the middle of the building, no problem, without sending people in with hand lines to fight that fire. Now, that's just me, you know.
Is that the vehicle you would send to, like a big box fire?
That would be the first response vehicle, along with the aerial.
Yeah, and also...
Does the aerial have a deck gun?
Aerial's got the, the tower on it.
But it fights fire up and over, where a deck gun can shoot straight in. So, I mean, there's, there's some differences there. I mean, I don't know if she's trying to be, you know, I know you're savvy with the dollars and you'd like to, you know, but if there's, if that is a necessity, I think the city should maybe consider making sure you had it for our...
I didn't just want to be greedy.
Another good example of the deck gun usage would be like a residential structure fire, you have flings shooting out the front door and you do what's called a blitz attack. You roll up, you get the deck gun going and you shoot right at the front door. It's the first thing, you dump your tank right at the front door. So there's times where that deck gun has been very useful and I've said, in my years of firefighting, I've used that deck gun plenty to put out plenty fires and especially...
Is there savings by ordering it as part of the original build-out? Or would we maybe find a deal, you know, in the aftermarket?
They're usually about the same price regardless, but I could ask them what their price is and what I could get a price for, so.
If we're not getting this vehicle for almost a year...
As I said, it could be budgeted for the next year's budget. It's could be, it's because it's prepped for it.
Right. And there's no big savings, you think, of...
I don't believe so.
...the original build-out, right?
No.
We're going to do more next year, we don't do it this year.
It might, but...
Good possibility.
Yeah.
With the amount of increases, you could see, like, another 500 to 2000 increase on prices.
With something like this, you can throw 500 gallons at, at a building in two minutes, you know, I mean.
Well, this, this truck's got 1,000 gallons on it.
So we can dump 1,000 gallons out of that deck gun before, you wouldn't have to touch a hydro.
Which is, which is huge because that first initial knockdown, fire grows exponentially every minute. So the sooner you get it there, I mean, I'm just saying...
But we've, we've got a motion already on the floor and support. I say we just stick with what we've got now, keeping in mind that these two items are probably going to be necessary and I think we should begin doing the research of how to get them. Is there any potential to add them on after the fact? Because this is a year, this vehicle's going to be, not even be available for a year. If we decide at some point, add these items, is it an easy thing to do?
They could do it right at the fair, it's being prepped for it regardless.
Okay, actually, no reason to jump on this now.
We don't have to.
As long as, as you said, you're prepped for it, so it's a...
It's prepped for it.
We can hit next year's budget for it.
That's right.
And if you're going to get it almost sometime in June, our budget year ends June 31st, so July, you could...
That's what I figured, we could budget for it. Just let you know, we had a wishlist there that we didn't fulfill.
Yep. Any other hidden costs that we need to be aware of? I'm glad I asked.
Not that I...
I mean, I'm glad, but I'm also not glad, right?
Well, they...
I'm 30,000 not glad.
They want some money upfront for the chassis when it comes due and our chassis is supposed to be built in February and they were trying to get some money upfront from us and supposedly there's a, we can go back for a bond, a performance bond through FEMA. It's like $8,000 to guarantee that we're not going to get, you know, lose our money on that. It's reimbursable, I guess. It might have to be an outlay by the city, but it's reimbursable through FEMA for the full amount. They said it was 10% or whatever. It was like $8,000. I have Spencer checking into that right now, but they thought it was right around eight grand for that. Or you pay the interest on the chassis and it's like...
Mr. Mayor, do we need to make a motion on that as well or on the performance bond?
First we have to vote on that.
No, it's not, we don't have it.
I don't think he's...
So we don't have it in stone yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, not yet.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion from council?
Yeah, who did the drawing? It's very nice.
Drawings?
What drawing?
Do you guys want to see all these? You can come through as, if anybody wants to see the specs.
All right, if there's no further discussion, madam clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Secora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
And is there a second motion or do we have to do that one as well?
I think he combined them both together.
Yeah, the purchase of it.
Don't we have to do them separately or no?
I thought we had to do them separately, no?
No, we don't.
All right, good.
I'm glad everybody's very concerned and bringing it up.
You guys don't want to get so upset.
Next item, chief.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our 1990 Spurton LTI aerial that kind of died on us. The motor repair on the truck out is, the value of the truck isn't worth the repair, unfortunately. It's a 1990. I contacted numerous purchasers of used vehicles and scrap vehicles for parts and they said that nobody really wants to touch a 34-year-old aerial fire truck because the electronics and the hydraulics are bad, which that's all we've had problems with, right? So I'm making a motion, or I would like to get a motion for sell of fixed assets and scrap the truck because, to the highest bidder on what we can get it for scrap, because nobody wants it.
How do you bid that, on mint or something?
I, it has to be towed wherever it goes, so I think you probably should go to local scrap yards and see what they'll give us for it.
So chief's looking for a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
It's a sad day for that truck to go. I like driving that truck.
It doesn't drive anymore.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, chief.
Next item is I need a increase in, I came to you last meeting about a rebuild for our HME motor. It came in $4,440 over what was estimated. Upon reassembly, they tested the injectors on it and they had to replace all the injectors on the truck, so they didn't meet the specs. So I would like to have a motion for vehicle maintenance to General Ledger Account 101 336 930 in the amount of $4,440.72 for the upcharge on the rebuild.
Motion by Ryan.
Support.
Support by Secora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
And mayor, going back to, you said maybe a hidden cost, I'm checking into Cummings may sell us a 10-year warranty on our new vehicle because it's got a Cummings engine in it also. And I'm trying to get a price on that that we can maybe budget to have a...
Yeah, that might make sense, yeah.
Full warranty for 10 years, so. But other than that, thank you, council.
Thank you. Anything else to report, chief?
Um, I guess we'll be at the parade, huh? And we got, oh, that's right, I forgot about that. We had a, can't mention the name or the person, but it's a pretty interesting story. Apple Watch happened to call our dispatch. The lady doesn't remember going into cardiac arrest and our medics made a save. She's still in the hospital, but she survived. We had a resuscitation that's, supposedly she'll be out of the hospital. She doesn't remember what happened to her or anything. And it was Jeff Longville, Katie Ryan, Kyle Coopers, and Mark Ricketts were on the run.
Excellent.
And, you know, successful story, that usually doesn't, we don't get a lot of those, you know, so, but...
Good to hear.
That's the, the fast response, the Echo unit. I mean, the guys were right on the scene in no time and they revived her, so it's a great story.
Tell all the team thank you from us.
Yep.
It's great news.
Thank you.
Stuff like that is, is why the Echo program is so successful and now with the addition to the Tango program, there's a reason why.
Yep.
We have those people on and it goes to that life-saving factor.
Thanks. Chief Klose, the report from please.
Good evening, mayor and council. First included in your packet is a pension multiplier change. Give you a little bit of history of how this kind of started. I had met with the mayor probably early beginning of this year and kind of had discussions on, you know, how, how can we ensure that, that we recruit the best candidates and how can we retain the best candidates? And, and with that, one, one of the big driving forces for, for police officers is their pension. So in, in talking to them, I kind of discussed, let's, you know, is it possible to, to look at options to see how can we have the employees maybe fund an increase to their pension? So what, what happened from there is, is we agreed with, with mayor's office and with the two patrol units to do what's called an actuary. And what they do is they, they take certain situations and they look at the liabilities of the city, they look at the money coming in, the benefits going out, and they kind of evaluate, okay, if employees were to do X, Y, or Z, what type of benefit could they have that's going to be burdened or, or paid for by the employees and it's at no cost to the city? So included in, in your packet is the actuary that was done by Foster and Foster and they're the actuary company that runs the actuary for, for our pension system. I was just notified on, on Monday from our, our city treasurer, he attended the pension conference, that there was a change in Public Act 314 that requires a, a seven-day notification for not only the pension board system, but also city council. So what, what I, what I'm doing here today is, is, you know, kind of, kind of giving a backstory to the, the pension increase and I would ask you to review the, the actuary that's, that's presented by Foster and Foster. And I would request a motion to table this and put this on the next meeting so we can possibly have a, have a vote at the next meeting.
I'll look that motion to table and have it presented for the next meeting.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, chief?
Yes, mayor and council, just a, a quick update on, on the police department. Currently, we, we have three open positions on, on the police department with obviously Officer Plant leaving and a couple other administrative issues with, with other officers. I'm happy to announce that, that currently we have two officers in the background phase. We ran interviews about a week and a half ago and we had seven applicants. So it's, it's kind of a nice position to be able to pick what we feel is, is the best for the city and not just because we, we need a position filled. So we're very hopeful that these, these candidates... because what the companies had bid on was not the specs that we had presented. So according to the city policy, we only had two. It wasn't proper bid, so we rebid the project down.
And the numbers were very high.
The numbers were very high.
Most important.
We submitted a second bid project on midden, and at that point, we received two bids. One, if you look in my notes here in the support document, was extremely high, really way outside the realm. And the other one was also elevated high. The two bids that we received on the second bid process did not meet the city's purchasing agreement to have three bids. We had reached out to our longstanding company that does our maintenance on it. That's PM Technologies. To get a third bid, we had comparable, and we were able to comply with the city bid project. We're looking at the really five bids that we have out there. And if you look at supporting documents, it lists all the numbers, kind of the totals between all the departments. PM Technologies comes in at the lowest cost for the project here. So what I'd be requesting is a motion to enter into agreement with PM Technologies, and this is going to upgrade our police and fire department generators through the FEMA mitigation grant.
I'll make a motion that we accept PM Technologies' bid, and that will cost the city twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars to upgrade because the total cost is a hundred and ten thousand, and with the grant is only eighty-two eight, so... So do we have to make a second motion?
Well, this is the way the AI, the Agenda Item Summary reads. Motion to enter into agreement with PM Technologies to upgrade the police and fire generators through the FEMA mitigation grant.
Okay, so moved.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? The second motion chief's looking for is a request for a budget amendment to amend revenue GL one oh one dash three oh one dash five twenty-eight dash zero 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 dash UPFGEN by eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars and amend expenditure GL one oh one dash three oh one dash nine eight one dash zero 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 dash UPFGEN by a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, so moved.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, chief?
Yes, mayor and council, just a quick update on the police department. Currently, we have three open positions on the police department with obviously Officer Plant leaving and a couple other administrative issues with other officers. I'm happy to announce that currently we have two officers in the background phase. We ran interviews about a week and a half ago, and we had seven applicants. So it's kind of a nice position to be able to pick what we feel is the best for the city and not just because we need a position filled. So we're very hopeful that these candidates are going to work through the background and be able to maybe offer them conditional offer employment. One is currently working as a police officer at the Detroit Metro Airport, and the other one is in the police academy. So we have the possibility of hopefully getting somebody in soon, and then having another one along with... We have Dispatcher Domingue at the police academy right now. So two candidates coming on the police academy. One of the things I'd like to, you know, let the council know and also let the public know is we've been receiving a lot of complaints regarding traffic. And with schools starting up and with parents walking the kids out there, there's been a number of complaints regarding traffic. So I just ask the citizens to be mindful when you're at subdivisions. Speed limit is twenty-five. Please stop at the stop sign. Please be mindful if people aren't walking their children, kids aren't playing around. Really has been an increase in probably the last two to three weeks of a lot of number of complaints out there. Lastly, I'd just like to kind of make a public thank you to the Macomb County Sheriff's Department. This weekend, there was a private event held over at Jimmy John's. Jimmy John's had contracted with the police and the fire department to provide services over there. And given the nature of the event, I had made a call out to the Macomb County Sheriff's Department to see if their SWAT team could come assist us with security and safety of the event. The team showed up in tremendous numbers, brought all their equipment, and it really, as the overall commander of the scene out there, felt really good to have that amount of officers, that amount of professionals out there ensuring that not only the event is safe, but the citizens are safe and every... We don't have to worry about any incidents. So I just want to publicly thank the Macomb County Sheriff's Department for their assistance this weekend in that event. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief.
Oh, yes, sir.
How are you doing with crossing guards? You're still short on crossing guards, so we can look a lot better now.
We have one right now that we're... Vince has been working on.
I always appreciate our crossing guards when that sits at the far end of the table.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I live right next to a school crossing, so I obviously run out there every day.
Well, I will say that there's a lot more traffic. As far as last year, when I started, a lot more kids are walking to school, and I like that because last year I was like, one kid, why am I out here? But now, I think they see me out there and others out there, and I think they're feeling more comfortable sending their kids on their bikes and on the foot, so it's very cool.
Also, he's like six-five, so people are too scared not to stop.
Is that all, chief?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Diamond, DPW report.
Good evening, mayor and council. First of all, thank you very much for the consent agenda for the Michigan Rural Association. That's going to help us out with training. I know that we've had a lack thereof in the last couple of years from what I understand, so this will help us and gives us a good discount. We'll make that money back very quickly, so it's definitely worth it, so appreciate that.
And that was the consent?
That was, yep. My first, what goes there, is the Great Lakes Electric Supply Lamp Post Replacements. If you haven't heard, we've had two lamp posts and two hydrants taken out in consecutive weeks, weekends. So luckily, we were able to get the hydrants back in service the next day. Lamp posts were a little bit, a little more pricey. So the two areas were four, five, three oh three Van Dyke, which was by Chase, and four, five, five twenty Van Dyke, which was over by Hayes. We did need to order two whole new lamp posts with the costs that are, will be... I believe the deputy treasurer already sent out the invoices to the responsible parties. So we will be spending it first out of expenditure, the street lamp expenditure, one oh one four four one nine seven three zero zero zero, and then it would be reimbursed at one oh one one four one six nine six seven nine zero zero zero. So I'm requesting a motion by council to approve the purchase of the two complete Hallifane Wadsworth-style pole kits for a total of thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents from Great Lakes Electrical Company payable from General Ledger account. And then the cost be credited to the reimbursement after... After the responsible parties pay.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
I just got one thing. Is there any thought in the future of just trying to get some of those placed in budget so we have them on hand versus buying them as needed?
And we are actually...
We're going to go through...
There actually were... We have a few older ones that we're working on. There was budget that was put in this year to sandblasts and powder coats, so we went to our, shall we say, stock, all the old ones that were knocked down, and we've pulled out the ones that can be. So we are getting those sandblasts as first, so you will see a change. I do have to talk to the mayor about possibly ordering another one, which is in your price, just so we have one so when we put those in. But yeah, that is the plan, so...
Any further discussion? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
And then with that, I will need a motion to amend the fiscal year 2024 general fund street department budget as follows: increased by thirteen thousand six hundred dollars for the following two accounts of one oh one four four one six seven nine zero zero zero, and then reimbursements of the one oh one four four one nine seven three zero 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 street lamps.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Socora, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next one, next item, is in a continued attempt to clean up the DPW yard. In accordance with the City of Utica disposal of equipment policy, there was a list of items that was created and deemed to be for auction or scrap for non-usage, non-compliance, non-functioning. Each item was tagged with this Capitol Assessment Department with the help of the treasurer. I'm looking for a city council to approve the disposal list of items either through auction or scrap. Most of them, I'm going to tell you, are going to go to scrap. We have picked up... We have taken everything that possibly could be used on any of these, the equipment. There's a couple trucks, there's a couple lawnmowers, our back, the old Vector. Our guys have been working their tails off to get everything possibly out. We've taken doors off that we've used that were... We had other ones dented. We've taken lights, parts of the engine. So what is left is definitely for scrap, so it'll be great to get the yard cleaned up, so...
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
I was just going to say I commend you for cleaning up the yard.
Yeah. Thank you. The guys are very happy, too.
I talked to the guys, and they're very happy to have a clean work from the Ryan.
Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The third item is regarding our current Vector truck. Our Vector truck, while almost thirty years old, handles the needs of the city and still has life left in it. Our DPW mechanics have been able to keep it serviced and maintained since the purchase of it from Shelby Township. Some of the scope of the repairs needed is beyond the capabilities of onsite servicing. Some repairs filed through the MDOT inspector can be serviced by DPW with only repair parts needed. Our mechanics are in discussion with JDC of Northfield to work out these line items. The main repair needed is the pump, and we do not have the necessary tools to complete. Most of the labor hours on the quote are for this repair, and the repairs are not only recommended but required. And I'm requesting a motion for city council to approve up to the max quote amount of seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-one cents to start the main pump repairs. Knowing that we are in talks with them, that number will be much less. I just want to be able to say, yes, start it so we can get this thing back. And then another add on to this, I would like to say publicly to thank Shelby Township has helped us out three times already with their Vector, twice at Heritage so we can keep the bathrooms over, and once when Davis flooded, so... We have needed, and, you know, we... Our list of catch basins and everything that need to be jetted out and vectored is growing, so we need to get this back and running.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Ma'am clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Great job, Mr. Diamond. Anything else to report?
Well, I've got a list, but I'm not going to name all. We've been continuing to clean up the city. Obviously, a big thing that happened was the flood, so getting Heritage Park back up to... To use, shall we say. Davis Street was a while, got that cleaned out. Again, thanks to help with Shelby Township and their Vector. The guys did a great job. We were eighteen hours we were out there on Davis Street, so the guys, you know, they put in some time, and that's eighteen hours that was after normal hours, just to make sure that we were not letting it go into the... Our neighbors' basements there. We've got quite a few, you know, thank yous from the people there that we were out there right away. Doing some cleanup, all the striping is done finally, so we're good for this year. We're working on cleaning up the catch basins and the weeds along, a lot of the, in the street that are responsibilities. All of our guys got their DOT medical exams. Some of those have been expired for a little bit, so now anyone who has a CDL, we're all set with the state on that. Other than that, it's late. We're doing things, and we're keeping things going, so... Thank you for your support and all the kind words that I've heard from everybody, so appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may remind you, as someone who rides my bike in that area, Utica got their, our area cleaned like four or five, in some cases, six days quicker than... I don't want to throw Sterling Heights under the bus, but top shelf to Bill and your guys. Thank you.
Thank you. I will let them know when you can.
Thank you. The treasurer is not in today. He's traveling, so we have no report from him. Ma'am clerk, report from administration.
Thank you, mayor and council. I will just update you. We've been taking applications and resumes and doing interviews for deputy clerk position that you have approved for full time. We are going into second interviews, so I'm just asking you to continue to be hopeful that we find someone to fulfill that position. That's it.
Thank you. Parks are rec.
Good evening, everyone. We'll make it quick. So as the mayor already said, that we will be having our Nightmare Auburn event on Saturday, October seventh, from noon to eight. Road closures will be... Tom will get with you. He wants to discuss that with you. He'll get with you this week. So we'll be for... To come, I'm sure that will be all over the place to... We'll let residents know. So, I mean, it's going to be a fun time. Trick or treating, family fun zone, cider and donuts, crafters, vendors, zombie walk. First half of the day is mostly going to be children's activities. Second half of the day, a little bit spookier kind of stuff, so, you know, come join us. We've got live music. There's going to be a fine Bigfoot. You may just see Bigfoot walking through Auburn, so it's going to be a fun time, and so, yeah. You better watch it, yeah. So, yeah, so we're going to have a... It's going to be a fun event, so I hope to see everybody out there. The one thing we are looking for is definitely need some volunteers. So if anybody has any high schoolers who would like to come volunteer, if they've got any requirements for their, you know, for their senior years and honor society, if they want to come, you know, volunteer, we'll have a little signup genius that'll go out in the next week here. So if you have anybody, or they can email me at uticaparks, with an S, rec, R-E-C, at gmail dot com if they would like to volunteer. Okay?